My name's Dani Ledesma and I'm the advisor on racial equity and social justice for PPS. I'm gonna go ahead and get us kicked off for the work session and we're gonna start with an update on some of the work that we've been doing around racial equity and social justice with a focus on our updated racial equity and social justice lens and protocols. And so, before we jump into that, I wanted to give a little bit of context. When the superintendent came to PPS and since then, as he's been sort of getting our district organized around the work that lays ahead, one key piece of work around that has been reorganizing the district so that equity doesn't rest in one area but rather is integrated throughout all of the district in all departments. But there's not only a passion and enthusiasm about it but also responsibility and accountability to our aspirations. So, I've had the honor of being at the district since August and I've actually really feel extremely fortunate and honored to be working on this because the district has a long history of emphasizing and prioritizing racial equity and social justice. In 2011, the racial educational equity policy was passed and since then, the district, its leaders, and our community members have worked really hard to ensure that we're meeting our aspirations around racial equity and social justice. I've had the honor of sort of watching this work from the public sector. I worked in the city for a long time, worked for the state, and then most recently at the Coalition of Communities of Color where many of our member organizations are key partners here with us at the district. So, as we've been approaching this work, one of the key imperatives -- I'm getting cussed. One of the key imperatives has been to really focus on creating a plan that coincides with our racial equity policy that organizes all of our efforts in a way that's coherent, in a way that's measurable and actionable throughout all of our departments. And so, today, we're gonna talk about one of the milestones of that plan which is our updated racial equity and social justice lens and our corresponding protocols. And I'm really jazzed about the protocols but we'll talk a little bit more about the lens to kick this off. I would say that one key takeaway about the racial equity and social justice lens and the way that we're really thinking about this is that this is one of our many tools that's gonna help us develop a shared analysis that's going to really kick off our best critical thinking so that we are moving in the same direction. The racial equity and social justice lens is not the end state, it's not the framework. It is a tool that's gonna help us collectively think about how we need to change our practices, improve our efforts, and really sort of swim in the same direction. The utilization of this tool and the resulting protocols will be done in collaboration and in parallel with our visioning process as well as our strategic planning. So, we at the district have two primary goals around the racial equity and social justice lens is that we're really trying to cultivate, continue to cultivate, and build on the work that's been here at the district and really strengthen our racial equity and social justice here at PPS. At the same time, we want to document the use of this lens through our protocols and really begin to utilize the data and the analysis that's generated from the application of the lens so that we're really operationalizing equity and our support for our goals and activities that get developed. The updated lens, which is in your materials, looks a little bit different than what we had before. This new lens has four components and it's my belief that we should be looking at the totality of the lens and not sort of just looking at those questions. The preamble or the introduction really sets the lens in context. It gives a little bit of history about our policy here at PPS. And then, our belief statements allow folks who are using the lens to sort of see, this is the foundation, these are some foundational beliefs that should inform the application of the lens. Then we have six questions and they're very similar to the lens that we were using before although they've been slightly updated. We'll talk about those. And then, because it's really important to get everyone swimming in the same direction to really develop that shared analysis, we have a glossary of terms. And I would say that all of these have an opportunity to continue to be improved and developed and changed over time but we thought it was important to kind of set down this mile marker and say, "This is what we're gonna be using for the next, for 2019." So, there's six questions and so what I thought I could do is just quickly go through the questions, tell you a little bit of background about those questions. The lens as a tool is designed to interrupt a ladder of inference. So, as human beings living in Portland, Oregon, we are charged with taking in so much information and our minds often will betray us because we're trying to process information so quickly that we often jump to conclusions that lead to developing beliefs and then you take actions based on those beliefs that may not be fully informed or had the time for you to think about unintended consequences. So, these questions are designed to really interrupt that ladder of inference, to slow us down and think about the way that we're processing information so that we're developing our critical thinking skills around these questions. So, the first question is to describe the proposed action, the desired results and outcomes, and the connection to our mission here at PPS. This is really a grounding question. Hopefully, if you think about like an action that you're taking, hopefully, when we ask this at the outset, folks are saying like, "Oh, this has absolutely to do with what we're here for at PPS. It's connected to our mission. There is a desired result and an outcome that we're thinking about." The second question is about involving stakeholders who are also members of the communities who are affected by the policy, program, or practice or decision. I think at PPS, we've done a lot of learning and growing around thinking about how to bring in stakeholders who are impacted by policies and really helping, thinking about how we can co-create those decisions together and programs. So, we ask folks, "Who have you involved?" And hopefully, folks begin to start to think about, "Well, who are the stakeholder groups that are important?" And hopefully, those continue to grow over time. There's sort of like a part B to the question that is basically, is there stakeholder support or opposition and why? And I would say that for all these questions, there's not necessarily a right answer at this point. This is a tool, right? And so, we're trying to document, what are we answering? Who are the stakeholders? What is the opposition or what is the support? And hopefully, through its continual application, we'll be able to sort of analyze that over time and continue to build that body of information that can inform our public engagement and the way that we communicate with folks. The third question is about, this one is the big question, which is, "How does the proposed action expand opportunities for racial equity and social justice? Who are the demographic groups that are gonna be impacted by this? How will each group be impacted or affected by the decision or the action? And are there any potential unintended consequences for specific groups or populations? And are there strategies in place to mitigate any negative impacts?" Plus you. And so, this is really the one where we want people to spend the most time. We're thinking about, "How is this decision, how is this action part of a set of actions that really is expanding opportunity for our students, for the students that we know are impacted by the lack of racial equity and social justice?" So, we really want folks to think about expanding opportunities. The fourth one is kind of like the opposite one, a different sort of approach to the same question, which is, "Does the proposed action address any barriers?" So, have you identified barriers to racial equity and social justice and does this action attempt to remove those barriers? And then, the prompt after that is, "Well, how are you going to track your progress towards reducing those disparities? Like, what's your plan to actually measure that?" And this is one of the key differences from the past lens to this one. These questions are much more, we're just adding a little bit more focus around collecting information and data and sort of asking folks about that. The fifth question is, "What information or data are you basing your decision or action upon? What data or metrics will you collect or use to track the impacts of the proposed action on the identified populations?" And I think this district is really striving to be data-informed and data-driven and so this is one of the places where we want alignment in the way that people are approaching their critical thought around racial equity and social justice. This is something that is being done across the organization. The last question is open-ended and we ask folks to describe any changes that they have made or that they will make to the action after applying the lens. So, again, there aren't any necessarily right or wrong answers but over time, we'll be able to look at this answer and to see how we're changing behavior over time, what difference that makes. So, that's the lens. The company protocols, you have just a short document, I think it's like four or five pages, that has a sort of like, "What is the lens? Who's gonna use it?" And then, it's a chart where it has PPS departments, a scenario that'll be applied, and then a date. And so, at the superintendent's leadership team, the group decided that we would be the sort of like leaders in applying the lens and reviewing the lens. So, we finalized the lens in December. You know, we've got a shared drive where it's, I'm smiling at Don because I'm sure he's gonna help us make this better. But we have a shared drive that's open to everyone where the lenses will be, the completed lenses will be stored where everyone will have access to them. And then, the SLT team will start to review the completed forms once a quarter. And at that team, we can look for where there might be congruence or variance, where we can start to identify areas where we need to apply more effort, more resources. And then, we will, at the end of the year, present sort of an annual report or a synthesis of what's been gained by all of those scenarios. And then, in December, we'll start again and identify new scenarios where it can be applied. I've worked in racial equity and social justice for a while and, you know, one of the sort of evolutions of the practice has been, a lot of organizations are using a lens. A lot of folks talk about like, "Oh, we put the lens on it. We use the lens. You know, we have an equity lens." But often, there is no documentation of that application and so, a real opportunity for learning and growth and sort of that development of culture gets lost. And so, I really think that sort of adherence to these protocols, some shared analysis, some shared learning will help us continue to develop those skills needed so that we can implement our work on the racial equity and social justice plan. So, I think we wanted to take this opportunity with the board during your work session to sort of discuss potential areas where the board may want to also add some scenarios, two or three, for 2019. And so, I think what we'd like to do is just kind of have a discussion amongst the board about if you've thought of any scenarios that you might want to apply at. Scott?
Boundaries and focus option, dual language immersion and boundaries, we have to run from day one.
Okay. Any other scenarios?
And the article that superintendent shared around what happens in Salem, guys, are just really reinforcing that.
So, the whole discussion about converting the remaining K8s to middle school so there's equitable academic opportunities for middle grade students. In addition, when we get to the strategic plan, making sure that our metrics are aligned with our priorities around accelerating achievement for historic and reserve students.
Great.
It's everything that we do, basically. I mean, it's from budget because everything's implications is how it's gonna impact differentially across groups. So, it really is, every decision that we make as a board has to be considered through some kind of a lens.
Amy?
I think with this budget cycle, since we have a new team and we're gonna have some new processes around budget development, it's a real opportunity to make a kind of a zero-based approach, not make assumptions based on how we've done things before but to really use that equity lens at the beginning of the budget development process. Why have we persistently gotten the results that our historic and reserve students have gotten and what have the, you know, how does that relate to the way that we've made investments historically?
Programming. The list you've given is a fine list but it's very, very adult-centered. Management needs, administrative needs, operations needs, not a lot about what actually happens for kids in the classroom.
Anyone else?
So, I understood kids in the classroom. You also said programs. Could you just expand on that? Just to make sure we understand.
If you're a child from a poor family or a child of color in important public schools, you're much more likely to not have a choice in elective programming, not have connections to outside opportunities, not have a lot beyond bare bones programming, bare bones course offerings in the schools.
I talked about intentionality and things here but I'm wondering if, maybe one of the big questions of equity is, and maybe it's just phrased differently here, it's kind of, what are those unintended consequences? Where, you know, have you thought through every scenario? And where could there be some unintended consequences? And that's a big part of looking at equity.
Yeah. So, if you don't mind, I would wanna kind of clarify. I think one of the things that I recommended to the SLT and I think that the team is sort of recommending to all of their teams is that, I think a lot of times, the use of the lens is, I'm gonna use the analogy that I think people are probably tired of. It's the couch-to-5K program, right? So, right now, we're like on the couch, right? And the 5K is our goal, right? And so, the lens is really that sort of like, those training runs that help us get to being able to make the run. And so, it can be a little bit daunting to say that we're going to apply it to everything because you're not gonna go from the couch to the 5K on day one. And so, our approach was to try to identify these high-leverage opportunities where we thought its application is going to carry the most impact amongst the leaders. We're certainly inviting people to use it in addition. And so, I think what I would identify for, what I would recommend for the board is to try to amongst yourselves prioritize what you think the highest leverage opportunities in your role as board members for its application and to sort of, you know, put your goal out there is like, you know, you're trying to get to the 5K so you're gonna do three training runs. And if you, at the end of it, you're able to, you know, run a marathon because you've done your 5K training so well, that's great. But I think it is a little bit of a process. And so, our approach has been to try to identify these sort of like really important scenarios where asking these questions because the day-to-day of what we're doing is still gonna be coming out of this. And so, in order to really maximize our time together, we wanted to prioritize sort of its use and its application.
I guess I don't see how asking about unintended consequences isn't getting to the heart of things, so.
It is one of the questions.
Yeah, okay.
I wonder if we couldn't have members speak up so everybody could hear.
Good, that's great.
Ms. Houston is trying to record this and she doesn't have hearing aids.
Well, I don't need more glasses. That's there, great.
So, she'd asked about if there's unintended consequences and I think it was resolved that she found that question there.
So, I need bigger font, obviously. Even with my context and reading glasses.
So, I guess it sounds like you have a good list. You've talked about a couple of specific policies that are upcoming as well as sort of like attention to the budget. So, why don't we, why don't I sort of like work with Roseanne and with Stephanie Sodan to kind of propose some potential list for you? And then, I'm available to, you know, support and help, you know, facilitate sort of maybe the first run if you'd like to help sort of make, do that, so. Oh, yes, Amy?
Just one more thing I would add to that, which is a subset of what Scott raised, which is, for us to consider, which is co-located programs. All co-located programs.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So, just really quickly, if there's any other questions about the lens, I'll just give you another update. So, in order to kind of fulfill the policy that was passed in 2011, there have been a series of work plans. And so, one of the things that we're engaged in now is trying to develop a work plan, an updated work plan for the racial educational equity policy. And so, the process to develop the plan has been a little bit different than we've done in the past. We're trying to take an appreciative inquiry approach. We're asking a cross-functional set of teams to really think about, what are the bright spots? Where either at PPS or beyond PPS are there practices, programs, investments, resources that are really moving the dial on racial equity and social justice? And so, that sort of bright spot process has been what we've been working on. There are four temporary teams, one around teaching and learning, student-led initiatives, community partnerships, and talent diversity. And so, in the month of January, we developed our compendiums of bright spots. In February, we are kind of taking a sort of a lens, a magnifying lens, if you will, to analyze those bright spots, to think about, you know, how bright are those spots? But also, what would it take to be able to fully implement across the district? Not necessarily in one space, but what would it be to take something to scale so that equity is really sort of something that is seen throughout the district? It's been really invigorating to sort of be in those meetings with our talented educators and staff here at PPS. We've got a lot of folks who are really committed and passionate about equity and we're really excited about that. So, I'll come back and we'll give you some updates in the spring, once we've kind of gotten a little bit deeper into the plan. Scott?
Yeah. So, realizing and being supportive of us taking this work in a new direction, one thing from the previous program was that there were some schools that really got deep into equity work, particularly being a white person, white people, right? Really owning their whiteness and their privilege and looking at, well, how does that play out in the classroom? How do I, is that unconscious? Making the unconscious conscious, which is so challenging, along with the visible curriculum, like that work in terms of student relationships. And there doesn't seem to be a program support for continuing that work. And so, depending on the school, depending on where they are, it's either happening or not, or trying but maybe not as effective as they would like. Where are we at with that in the grand scheme of things?
Well, so, I can say that a lot of--
Realizing that we're just beginning.
Yeah. So, I think, I would say that we haven't drawn any conclusions yet about sort of that work. I think that work has been identified as a bright spot by several teams. And so, we're kind of taking a look at sort of what were the conditions that made it successful? Where were there challenges? What would it take to sort of have some consistency across all the district, across all schools? What could be some scope and sequence around the conversations? What happens after the conversations? So, I think we'll get, you know, we're right, this is February, so we're right in the sort of like taking a closer look at that. So, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't, nobody's drawn any conclusions about that just yet. And so, it's likely that if--
Good note.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's likely if something was working, we'll try to continue that and sort of build on that, so.
And just know what, I guess, what the negatives were in the past is we heard there was nothing after the conversations, so, you know, that's what Paul was talking about, obviously, getting to where it's impacting kids in classrooms. And that's, the conversations were great in the old structure, many of them, but it was that missing piece as to then what next? So, just, I'm sure that's what you're aiming for and keeping that in mind.
Yeah, yeah. That's been really consistent with our discussions.
Yeah, great.
Dani, have a question, this is more than a camper question. So, the policy requires that we have action plans every year and twice a year reporting on progress. So, I'm wondering, this is described as with the lens and using it, but is it part of the overall plan or are we at one of those stages in the plan that at some point, there's gonna be a plan at the end and the lens is part of it? Sorry, it's just, it's a process.
Yeah. So, I would say we're in the process of developing the plan so that we can get back into compliance with the policy. The lens is one of the tools that's gonna help us execute on the plan, right? So, if we get really good at that 5K, then we're able to go the distance on sort of the deliverables in the policy as well as in the plan. So, I would say the tool, the lens is one of the tools that's gonna help with the plan. The plan is in development. Right now, we are out of compliance with the policy and we're working on developing that plan. And we'll come back to the board with some recommendations for the plan as well as, you know, some potential places where we can update the policy. A lot of folks have talked about like adding some more clarity, thinking about different levels of accountability, and really trying to keep the focus on student outcomes, so.
Can you talk a little bit about how this vision plays out in terms of ongoing professional development? Because this is one thing that we heard the last year from a lot of our educators and administrators that they really miss, that consistent professional development around equity. Some of them have kept it going in their buildings just because they're inspired individuals who found a lot of value in it and others have let it drop. So, what's the connection there?
Well, so, one of the teams is the talent diversity and that's where we've talked a lot about professional development. But professional development really sort of like, sort of runs through all of them. I think where we're trying to head is that where, so that we can think about consistent application across the whole district and sort of like what that scope and sequence looks like related to racial equity and social justice. So, I think the discussions that we've had are absolutely aligned with that desire to sort of maintain that level of professional development, if not go beyond, and also think about sort of like consistency.
So, I think to just elaborate a little further, I think some of the guidance that we pick an area, say teaching and learning, our educators want continued guidance on issues of cultural responsiveness and teaching and learning and addressing issues of implicit bias as part of their cycles of improvement. So, that is not work that we need to build, all sort of those understandings and not make them sort of as an allotment, but as an integrated part of ongoing conversations. I'm sure Cia can say a little more about this in this area, but the idea is to build out core that addresses those issues on the front end. And a question as well.
I probably have to say on that, that kind of got me kind of jogged my mind maybe like racial equity and curriculum as well like in the classroom. So, teachers meeting around like, how can we, I mean, my brain always goes to like history class, like how can we have equity in like diverse backgrounds in history and, you know, it can go through different classes as well, but you know, like teachers meeting around that to, I think, improve that issue as well.
Yeah. Some of the really exciting conversations have been around that sort of like, we've looked at curriculum, we've looked at instruction, and we've looked at student supports. And so, we've had educators who are on the committees and so that's been really exciting. One of the products of the plan will be these compendiums in each of these things. So, we won't be able to, you know, implement these, all of the things in the list, but we'll have those lists of sort of bright spots for your perusal ongoing, so.
One of the things that we hope emerges from this work to this point is the ability to integrate because there seems to be right now separation between the academic and the social motion. And so, the biggest challenge has been right now is we work on unit development. How do we begin to integrate the various elements that leads to a complete instructional program that pays attention to the whole child? That has been and will continue to probably be the challenge. How do we continue working with GVC, is our ability to do that well? And so, having that conversation now before we get too far down the road-- And so, having that conversation now before we get too far down the road gives us the opportunity to integrate those components to our own pressure development of ourselves for designing this work, but also our administrative and teachers.
Same inclusive applies to designing curriculum that integrates access and quantitative strategies for students' disabilities, which language matters, as well as cultural responsiveness. And so, we build it through a lens like that on the front.
So, maybe thinking in terms of, and we're including somewhere in the universal design for learning, which is that really inclusive case that might get some work.
Thank you so much for your time and for your commitment, and I'm sure you'll hear more. I think it's time for Cynthia.
Well, thanks for starting this really important work. I mean, it's critical work for us.
So, now's a perfect time to stand up and get a stretch while we switch presentations, but don't go far, because we're going to start in about two minutes.
I know.
They have a classic, I was like, I should have done that first period.
Okay, that's two minutes, it's just about there.
All right. So, I want to start out by introducing myself. I'm Claire Hertz, I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Operations here at Fortland Public.
I'm Cynthia Lee, CECL.
Okay, so, we are going to be presenting together, and we'll work hard to make sure that everyone can hear us and is trying to hear us, okay? So, we're going to go ahead and start, we have four parts to this work session. We're going to be going over a forecast and what we're anticipating for 1920 budget. And we'll be looking at principles, our guiding principles that have been adopted by our board, and our community budget review, community budget review committee.
Yes.
There we go. And look at the process that we're going to use this year, best practice around strategic budgeting, and then also look at what priorities have been established beginning last fall that we'll be bringing forward in a proposed budget.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here with you tonight. I will start off with telling you about our most updated forecast for 1920. We are expecting a shortfall of $17 million, and this is primarily due to our projections has fallen short of expectations, and the declining enrollment in, especially in the ELL, student poverty rates, and also with the PERS increase. There are three major events that is used to our budget development and revenue forecast. One is the governor's budget release in December, the budget-
The legislature's budget from the legislature will come out in the early March.
Right. And also, the budget, proposed budget that we're going to be producing for the CBRC and the superintendent and the board review coming up in April. So, this is the PERS rate for the last few years, and as you see, the rate consistently increased. And we are expecting to be at 8.81% for Tier 1 and 2, and 3.36% for Observe.
So, this is a legacy retirement system that has been created, I would say it's, the problems that we're facing now with increased rates began around in the 70s all the way through the 90s. And the decisions that were made then have created the rates that we have now. And when we get to the 2000, 2010, 2010s, we're only partway through the problem. We've got probably another 20 years before we're going to see the end of retirement. So, it's a legacy problem. It's something that we're going to continue to, statutorily, we're required to make those payments, and we will continue in paying for PERS. And then, after 20 years, we'll start seeing a decline in terms of costs, based on the PERS reform that has been done, I want to say we've done three rounds of tiers of PERS benefits.
I don't want to go into it now, but this slide just, I had a hard time.
Okay. So, you want to go back for that? Do you want me to go through it more?
No.
No. We'll do it offline. Okay.
Absolutely. Yep, we're happy to go into PERS rates with you.
Unless there's a human cry from the rest of the board members.
I'm not hearing one. So, now we're going to talk about-
They don't like it.
Yes, there is a human cry.
I'm just going to say one sentence.
Yes.
I feel compelled to note that a lot of the legacy problem is because the state failed to fund the pension program that they established.
Okay.
Just saying.
I hear what you're saying. And we as employers are all required to contribute to that, so we will continue to do so. All right. So, this is an important slide. This is about the board's role. I will highlight one of our favorite students here. So, this is an important slide, because what we are asking you to do as a board and then our CBRC, our Committee Budget Committee, is we need you to think about 50,000 students. You are going to hear testimony from individuals that have very specific needs. When we are reducing 17 million out of the system, there will be specific people that won't like what we've chosen to reduce out of the system. And as we're bringing those forward, we very carefully are going through as a senior leadership team with principal feedback, and working with our executive leadership, our superintendent, to bring forward what we believe is the best proposal to support 50,000 students. So, we want to remind you this with this picture, is that as you hear individual testimony, it's usually very compelling, and there is going to want to be a wish to fix whoever comes to talk to you about their need. So, you may hear from 200 individuals. You may, I'm not sure how many are going to come. However, many you come, that come, remember that there's 49,500 other students out there that are not here, and that you have a responsibility to them. Okay? So, really wanting you to think about all students, thinking about our equity lens, who's connected to our meetings, who doesn't usually show up, who we have the responsibility to support. So, I, and I will, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I really want you to hear, that's our responsibility.
Thank you, Claire. So, we are building the budget based on the principles that was approved by the board back in 2016, with the focus on equity and student achievement. For the last several months, we have been working very hard in all areas of operations to find more efficiencies, and we have been really focusing on strategies, on programs that we feel that will make the most positive impact on student equity and student achievement. We have been working hard to ensure that every, each and every student in PPS receives the quality education, and that we are looking for ways to further reduce our spending so that we can put the money back in the classroom for our students.
So, these principles were originally prepared by our CBRC, and then they came to our board and were adopted. And they've been in place, I believe, since 2016, if I got the right timing.
Yes.
So, we have been using these, and we, as we have been developing our budget, keeping these principles in mind. Now, on an annual basis, right now, we're going through a budget process, will be done by June. Beginning of July, we'll start working on a multi-year finance plan, because we'll have our visioning process done, and we will have, be creating that strategic plan. And then, we're going to talk about how we're going to afford to deliver on that plan, strategic plan, by making multi-year investments. So, we will bring these forward again in the fall of next year to review, to see if there's anything we need to update. So, for this year, we're sticking with what we've got, but in the fall, if we find that we need to realign to our new strategic plan, if there's something that needs to be aligned to that, we will do that then. So, we're going to use Government Finance Officers Association, GFOAs, best practices in school budgeting. I've been doing this for seven or eight years, and have had great success in taking money out of a system in things that weren't making a difference for student achievement, and putting them into new investments that move the bar, that improves student achievement. So, I've been working with our senior leadership team and starting to talk to them a little bit about this. We did some activities in January, trying to help set, align our work and get our priorities centered around students. And we're going to bring an activity here for you guys to do tonight with us as well. Okay? So, let me just talk about the most important part on this page, our academic and our finance folks, even though this doesn't look like Cynthia or I. This is Cynthia and I. This is Guadalupe, and Yvonne, and Louise, and Craig. I mean, we, you know, these are us, and we're coming on this path together. We can't do it separately. I would say the way we used to do budget, it used to be like an H, where finance was over here on one part, and instruction was on the other part. And once a year, we'd come together at budget and talk about things, and that would be our plan for the year. So, now, instead of an H, we're doing a ladder. So, we're doing it all year long, where we're connecting about these strategic investments and how we're using our resources. So, think of going from an H to a ladder of us working together through this process. So, we, we're looking at student learning goals in the beginning and see where, are we where we want to be. We're going to be looking at some student data tonight. And then, we're actually going to do a root cause analysis using a five whys protocol. I'll explain that in a little while. Some of you may have done that before. But we're talking about why is, we're going to go specifically about grad rates and our different students by racial groups. And we're going to talk about why some groups are graduating at a higher rate than others. And we're going to do some root cause analysis as to why that's happening. We have conversations about, at our table about that. And then, once we think about why it's happening, then that's where we've been since November, November, we've been actually working on this, best strategies to reach our goals. And we will be identifying metrics to do an academic determine on investment for, so as we invest in something, we'll be deciding how we're measuring, and then we'll be tracking for three years to see if that investment is making a difference. And if it is, great, and we'll just continue on because it's doing the job. If it doesn't, it comes back out and gets put into something else. Okay? So, more to come on this. A group of us are going to get trained later this month on that. And then, then we have to go through and think about, what are we taking out of the system in order to invest in these other items? So, we've been working it as a senior leadership team, and we're taking lots of resources out of areas and working to reinvest them in the ones that we think are the priorities now. So, we'll share more as we, we're still in that, in the middle of that work, and we'll share more in a future budget work session. And then, in the end, then we get to that strategic financial plan, that's that multi-year finance plan. And then, we work on sustainability and overtime. All along the way, we engage stakeholders. Okay? So, this is going to be our budget process.
Thank you, Claire.
Uh huh. There's two places, I just put that in the presentation. They have lots of, about each stage, examples, ways to do it, and then one more. There's also the smarter school spending. Both of them are related to the same process, but lots of examples of districts across the country that are having success with this process. Okay?
The timeline. So, I think this is a good place for me to really share with you the work that we have done to date, and then I'm going to be sharing with you what we will be doing. So, back in November, as Claire was saying, leadership team, both instruction and finance, spent a two and a half day of work sessions to come up with a high-level priorities for 2019, 2020. Then, then on the, on February 15th, we had the revenue forecast coming up soon, and then, let me see here, okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to January, because we did a bunch of work last month, and I can't wait to tell you about them. So, so, we're taking a break from the Christmas, coming back in January, we all get to attend three, four-hour work sessions.
Have a packet at your table, so if you want to each grab one of these at your table. We're going to do, so I'm going to go through the packet first, and let me know if anyone is missing, and we can, we have some extras at this table, we can share. So, I'm going to go through the packet as a team, as the whole, with the whole team. This first top part is our tool. We have pens.
Yes.
We have pens if you don't have a pen. And if you look on the second page, it has an example of how five whys protocol goes. And it says, "My car will not start," is the problem. And then, it said, and you say, "Why is that?" "The battery's dead." "Why is that?" "The alternator is broken." So, you go all the way down, and then in the end, what is the actionable item? It says, "I have not been maintaining my car according to the recommended schedule." So, really, if you maintained your car, you wouldn't have a dead car, right? That's an example of how you get to a five whys protocol. And so, there's more, further instructions on the third page. So, we'll want you, on the first page, our question will be, this is our problem. Why do we have a gap in graduation rates between our Native American, Black, and Hispanic students when we compare White and Asian students? Okay? So, why are graduation rates higher for White and Asian students than they are for our Native American, Black, and Hispanic students? That's the question. So, at your table, you're going to go through this five whys protocol, and I've provided some data, put some data together for you. So, this first part shows, that looks like this, is graduation rates, and it shows by And then, we also have this, these charts here that include by school and by race. So, again, these two pieces are all on graduation rates. And then, here we have report card data. As we know, graduation does not just happen in high school. It starts in pre-K, right? So, we have data here disaggregated by student populations on math and English language arts for grade levels. arts for grade levels throughout their education at PPS. And then we have another, so this is by school and disaggregated by student groups. Again, going K-12, report card data. Okay? And can you turn on the lights?
Yes.
Any more lights? And then one other piece is, shows the average days of substitutes by site, how often teachers are out of the school. It's a telling story. There is a story to be seen here. So what I'm asking you to do, talk amongst yourselves, review the data, and I know it's late at night for some of you, but we're going to ask you to perk up, stand up, do whatever you need to do. This is important work. Why are our students not graduating at the same, why aren't all of our students graduating at 100%? We want you to take a look, roll up your sleeves, mess around with the data, answer why is that happening? And come together as a table group of what might be an actionable response at the end. Questions about the protocol?
Do we use the all students?
Yes. So what I'll do is you go ahead and start talking at your tables, start looking at data. The two of you by yourself, if you want to do it yourself, you can, or if you want to join a bigger table group, that's fine. And I'll walk around and answer questions as you go.
If you know the answers, you can join us.
I appreciate the conversations at the table. It's been fun to visit every table and hear your conversations. Some of you aren't quite ready to finish. It's okay that we're not done. So I would like, as you've gone through this data, it's something that we need to do more of in our work, right? We need to have this at our fingertips. We need to be looking, instead of just thinking we know what's happening, that we're actually looking at it. This table back here told me they didn't have all the data they needed, which is, you're right, you don't. But for this exercise, we needed to have a controlled amount of time and space, right? So I would like this table here, I think you were the first ones done, so I'd like you to share what you came up with. So let's see how, what this table came up with as a root cause.
So the root cause is that differential graduation rates is inadequate foundational skills in K-8 for many students. Then you want me to go down the line?
Yep. And why is that?
Why is that? Because they have, students haven't had teachers who have been prepared to meet the needs of the range of the learners and strong and consistent leadership in many of those schools.
And why is that?
Because there has not been a strategic plan to put the best trained teachers in the needy of schools. And why is that? Because, let's see, we're missing incentives through HR and union collaboration.
It's okay.
And why is that? Well, perhaps institutional racism, kind of, inadequate resources, construction. It's just a system that hasn't changed.
So it sounds like you have some possible solutions as you're going through. I'm seeing some areas of work that could be done.
And we haven't used the equity protocol.
No. We kind of did.
How about this table over here?
Very similar problem that we identified and some similar root causes. So we identified lack of consistent instruction in the guys training, whatever. Lack of consistent instruction, so high teacher turnover in certain schools and high substitute usage. Why is that? High teacher absenteeism and turnover and administrative turnover, so inconsistent leadership over constructionally in the building. Why is that? A lot of reasons, but we honed in on one to keep our pyramid straight. Higher stress environments in schools with higher needs. Why is that? A lot of reasons, again, but we were trying to stay linear. So lack of behavioral and social emotional supports, although we did go a little broader on that and say also lack of early childhood education opportunities, you know, subsidies, early childhood funding opportunities, and also cultural implicit bias, lower expectations for certain subgroups of kids. So what can we do about it? Prioritization of resources for early social emotional supports and early childhood education.
All right. How about these two tables? Are you guys ready to share something? It's okay if you're not. We've got two groups that shared, but you get the sense, this is what, the work that we need to do as we're prioritizing our investments. And then, once we select investments, then we have to decide how we're measuring if it's making a difference. And then we keep that going for several years to see if it does make a difference and then we continue if it is, and if it's not, we repurpose the funds. And that's hard for a system. My last year in Beaverton, we took out $10 million that was not making a difference and repurposed it. And that was tough on staff.
I mean, not to digress, but did you feel like you had clear metrics that showed causality?
We, that's part of that academic return on investment, is that we go through training together in finance and instruction. We decide and we agree before we even start the spending of how we're going to do it. Because we, at first, we would say, "Oh, we don't like the way the measurements are." Well, if we don't like the outcomes, the measurements are wrong.
Yeah.
So we now very carefully select those and make sure that we're on track before we start. And we have training on how to do that.
And the only hard part is you've got to give it time.
So that usually, after the first year, do we need to tweak it? Second year, do we need to tweak it more? So it might be that it works for one group of students, but not a different type of, so we have different subgroups of students that might be impacted differently. So then we might hone it in for one group that's working well for, in the end. Okay? So more to come on that. Yes?
I mean, this is a question for the end, but I wasn't sure if you were wrapping up or not, but go ahead. So the best practices in school budgeting, first step, what are the student learning goals? When are we setting what those outcomes are? Because if everything's flowing from that, it seems like that would be, where would we be setting it at the beginning of the process?
In a perfect world, we wouldn't have schools in session and we would start planning a year in advance on what we were going to do.
But since that isn't the case.
But that isn't the case. So we enter wherever we are, in the time that we are, and then we build around to get to all of it. And that's what we're doing with our visioning and then our strategic plan, which will have those milestones and metrics.
Right. And as you're putting together the staffing, what, what are the goals that we're targeting, we're aiming at?
So let me show you a few instructional priorities that have been selected that might help answer that for you. Okay? So here is from our November session. Now, to say that we're going to be able to afford all 20 million in this first year, I can tell you it's not happening, right? That would mean we'd have to take $37 million out of our system to redo it. We just, we don't have, we're going to take bites and chunks each year to move along in that 20 million. So really looking at curriculum and assessments, professional learning, so in support for specific content areas, so extended days and years, so our hiring practices, and then also looking at supporting student outcomes. So there, these are some, each one of these has like five or six lines of detail, but we didn't bring that here tonight. But you can see that these are the areas that we prioritized back in November. I think the first round was at 90 million you guys brought forward? It was like 90, then we got down to 40, and now we've gotten down to 20, trying to get to a more realistic.
Well, we started with what we thought was the best.
Right.
And then we said, "But we can't do it all at one time."
Right.
So how do we put it into like three to five years?
Right.
And then kept homing down to what seemed reasonable, what were the highest priorities from that, that we could actually have enough resource to actually make a difference on something.
So it has kind of gone along and been revised as we go. And certainly, our disco folks can explain this much better than the finance person, but you get a sense of what are the priorities right now. And then, we also had some operational priorities and these were again vetted with our principles. We had a longer list and this was the shortened version of what they felt were the priorities. And so I want to highlight this pay equity, that's a new compliance, state law. Right now, the estimate is one to five million. So I picked the number in the middle. We really won't know what that's going to be until we finish our work. So I'm just giving you a heads up to that because we need, we have to do this. It's not a choice. And then here, this is radios and cameras, updates in our buses, and this is additional to get our maintenance of our buildings up. And then, this is actually, we're going to be putting $9 million into security in our schools and from the bond and an awesome grant from the state. And this is hiring a technician then to run all that. Once we spend 9 million, we need to have a person to keep it running. Okay? So we're going to pay, have to pay for these and they're coming out of three different areas, schools, but we are holding harmless where possible the title, targeted, and comprehensive school improvement schools, TSI, CSI. And there'll be some out of central instruction and business MOPs. So all three areas are going to bring, take resources out so that we can afford the things we need to do for kids. And then I just open it up for questions.
Sorry, I'm going to go back to the, some of the, same questions. I'm just looking at like this data, for example. So say, so I'm trying to take the strategies and tie it to what we might want to do. Say we say, English language arts, academic growth, you know, we have economically disadvantaged the median, their, their level of growth is much lower, then we want to, through the budget process, accelerate that. I guess I'm looking at the strategies and what are they, are they tied to something specific?
Yes.
So that would be helpful to have because...
And they will come forward. We're just, we're just bringing it out in different layers to you through the process.
I guess I'm going back to our discussion this weekend of if...
The strategic plan laid out all of that.
If you want to have the board out of the, picking the strategies, it's the agreement on the, the goals and the outcomes and then the staff saying, and superintendent, here's the strategies we're picking to move this particular outcome.
Correct.
And so we're not weighing in necessarily on the strategy that you've picked because we've agreed on the outcome and the educators are deciding what the strategy is. So I guess for me, it would be helpful to know what, what is it we're trying to move by those, with those strategies versus, I don't know, those look like $20 million of good, good strategies, but I don't know whether it's actually going to move, you know, the 11% of the African-American elementary students who are at grade level in math.
And I think it's also important to manage expectation when we're investing in building a core before you can start to differentiate and offer targeted interventions. So you have to do a balance of both. Right now, as a means of triage, but we're trying to make up for 10 years of this area being underdeveloped and underinvested in. So, but, but our, our goal would be to have a multi-year strategic plan, so budgeting would just back up the strategies that would have your end goals that we would report on in a progress monitoring fashion on a quarterly basis. So we're not quite there yet.
We will, yes.
And it's not like there's oodles of money here to sort of do the things that we know would make a difference, not for lack of thinking about how to provide intervention in some of these areas, but we've also managed our expectations and are seeing, well, where should we apply the nickels if there's only this much? And there's not new money. It's coming as a result of things we're not going to do and reductions that are being made in a lot of areas to support an agenda on academic improvement as well, as well as areas that we're obligated to support, like special education.
And we're using our work plan, our shared work plan. That is what we used as priorities to start with. So we have specifically, the template Clark gave us has exactly those goals. And then the activities we went through was, what do we think are the highest leverage things that we need to do to build a foundation in order to keep moving from that? So in absence of having the strategic plan where everything's already lined up, and then she also has been asking us, what are the metrics you would have to measure those things? So we will have that information for you. We'll open it now.
Nick, I think you had a question?
I know, I was just sorry.
Any, any other questions? Okay, well, I am too...
Just to summarize the, given our expected budget level or our baseline budget level is, how to identify, you know, how much money we can cut because we're not getting any payback from us first cuts, and then how to minimize the impact of further cuts based on our, you know, wholly harmless, our needy schools. And then balancing that with how much do we invest in, right, to build, building our system.
And we are balancing that right now. We're going, as a staff, we've been working on that for, since the beginning, first week in January, and now we're, I don't know, middle of February. So for six weeks, we've been doing that very thing as, as a senior leadership team. And by March 19th, we'll be ready for you, or six, whatever, it was March 19th, we'll be ready to share.
I have sent you all, board members, a link to the question and answer form for your youth.
Okay, and I think I have one minute and 20 seconds to spare. Rita, it's on, back to you, downstairs, I believe.
Okay, yes. Okay, so we're going to now, we can leave downstairs and we do the board meeting. And I would ask everybody to move a little more expeditiously than you did the last time.